COVID-19 has been a pivotal event in our civilization that has impacted the global economy, industry, diplomacy, and international relations. It has also forced us to reflect on the need for global cooperation on an unprecedented scale so that we can respond to an extremely infectious disease and the importance of leadership. We also need a healthcare system in every country that meets international standards. To overcome the pandemic, vaccine development was critical. The biohealth industry has emerged as a major growth industry in the post-COVID era, and we now rely on it for the survival of mankind. The world now shares the common view that instead of states or corporations taking the lead, we need a global response to a pandemic.
Global leadership in a global pandemic.
We have to be able to be prepared to develop new vaccines.
International communication and collaboration has been absolutely key to our response.
What are the lessons from COVID-19 that we need to learn for humankind's future? At the World Biosummit 2022, where we bring experts from various fields around the world together, we will discuss global biohealth and vaccines in addition to growth strategies.
Hello and welcome to the special session of the World Biosummit 2022. I'm your host, Na Hyun-gyeong. The COVID-19 pandemic has caused a major paradigm shift, and now we are at a stage where we are tasked with finding the path forward to the era of new normal. So how can we prepare for this future and which path are we supposed to take? That's the very question we'll try to answer at the World Biosummit 2022, where academics, IO officials, and industry experts will gather to discuss the future of global vaccines and the biohealth industry. Today, we'll talk about the challenges we face and the direction moving forward in the post-COVID era, so please do stay with us until the end. Before we dive into our discussion though, let's first welcome South Korea's Minister of Health and Welfare, Minister Cho Kyu-hong, who will be giving his opening remarks.
여러분 반갑습니다. 보건복지부 장관 조규용입니다. 2022 세계바이오 서밋 개최를 계기로 오늘 이 특별 프로그램을 통해 포스트 팬데믹의 예방 대응 대비 방안에 대한 여러 전문가분들의 경험과 통찰을 공유할 수 있게 되어 매우 뜻깊게 생각합니다. 코로나19가 우리의 삶을 바꿔놓은지 벌써 2년 9개월이 지났습니다. 일회적인 팬데믹 상황에 대응하여 여러 기업 및 전문가분들이 밤낮 없는 연구와 국가 국제기구 민간재단의 전폭적인 지원으로 백신 치료제 의료기기가 유례없이 빠른 속도로 개발되었습니다. 그럼에도 불구하고 코로나19는 모든 국가가 안전할 때까지 아무도 안전하지 않다는 교훈을 남기며 현재까지도 지속되고 있습니다. 우리는 코로나19 위기를 경험하며 또 다른 신종 감염병 출현과 확산은 피해갈 수 없는 위험임을 공감하고 있습니다. 넥스트 팬데믹 대응을 위해 백신바이오 산업의 과학적 혁신과 이를보다 공평하게 향유하기 위한 전지구적 협력은 계속되어야 합니다. 국제사회가 신뢰를 바탕으로 더욱 협력하고 국가 국제기구 기업들이 각자의 자리에서 역할을 다한다면 감염병 위기로부터 인류를 보호할 수 있을 것입니다. 오늘 이 특별 프로그램이 그간 각 분야의 코로나19 극복 경험에서 교훈을 나누고 포스트 팬데믹 대응 방안에 대한 인사이트를 널리 공유하는 장이 되기를 기대합니다. 마지막으로 2022 세계바이오 서밋에도 많은 참여와 관심을 부탁드리며 우리 모두의 노력으로 팬데믹 위협에서 모두가 자유로울 수 있는 희망이 날이 오기를 기대합니다. 감사합니다.
Thank you for your remarks. As mentioned, we have gleaned insights from our battle against the pandemic since three years ago, and these experiences have not stopped at simply giving us lessons, but it has given us tips on how to stay resilient and be ready for another possible pandemic. The reason why I say this is because we have a special guest in our virtual studio, our first speaker, Dr. Jerome Kim, and he will be talking about some of the lessons learned from COVID-19 and our readiness against another potential pandemic. The floor is yours, Dr. Kim.
I'm Jerome Kim, Director General of the International Vaccine Institute, and I'll speak today on lessons learned: preparing for the next pandemic. The first lesson is that innovation can have impact. We have over 120 vaccines in different stages of human clinical testing, and for the first time ever, approved mRNA vaccines, extensive use of vaccines based on adenovirus vectors such as chimpanzee adenovirus or adenovirus type 26, an approved DNA vaccine from Zytus cadilla of India, and the use of new adjuvants, powerful new tools that improve immune responses, make them stronger or more long-lasting. Another lesson was though that in order to achieve this innovation at a very rapid pace required a significant amount of funding, tens of billions of dollars. Highlighting here, the contribution of Operation Warp Speed, an $18 billion US government program that picked eight vaccines and funded them and made promises of purchase of those vaccines were the vaccines to be successful. Another lesson was that we know that now we can scale to the production of billions of doses within the course of 12 months, and now hopefully with these sources of manufacturing identified, when the next pandemic comes, we'll be able to do this even more rapidly. This was so impressive that in 2022, it's not supply that's an issue. It raises the disturbing question that actually scaling up may be less of a problem than actually getting the vaccine to the right place at the right time equitably and ensuring that the vaccine can have impact. This lesson reminds us that we know that the vaccines were not equitably distributed. In North America, in Europe, in many parts of Asia, in wealthier countries, people around the world have received at least a dose of vaccine, most of them two doses, and in many cases, a significant proportion of the vaccine has been boosted. But what we see is that in Sub-Saharan Africa, the map is yellow, which means that vaccination rates there are typically under 50%. And what you can see from our world and data is that although we've distributed nearly 12.7 billion doses of vaccine and 2/3 of the world has received at least one dose, 77.5% of people living in low-income countries remain unvaccinated. The next lesson is that impact is about vaccine delivery or something that our professors taught us, which is that vaccines don't save lives, vaccination does. And this gets to the idea that we had to deliver maybe 16 billion doses of vaccine. And this was going to create a huge problem in logistics, in cold chain, in tracking and identifying the people who've been vaccinated, allowing people to have access to vaccination sites, and then we had to confront the problem of vaccine trust and acceptance. We needed to get people to believe in vaccination and receive vaccines, and all of this gets to the core of the problem, which is that most health systems are not sturdy enough, robust enough, to be able to handle the vaccination of the entire population. And you see that in this slide. The red dots indicate the high-income countries where the cost to vaccinate 40% of the population was not a significant portion of the amount they normally spend on health. But as you look at low and middle-income countries or low-income countries at the other end, you see a big problem that significant parts of the health budget, maybe 40% of the health budget of Mali, would have been taken up implementing COVID vaccination. So countries had to make tough choices about what was important to them with regard to health. The next lesson has to do with our approach to the pandemic. You know, in the beginning, before we had vaccines, all we had were masks, distancing, and hygiene. And in Korea and other countries, we had good access to diagnostics, which allowed you to know where the pandemic was and allowed governments to implement appropriate types of measures in order to prevent spread in populations. As we developed vaccines, we developed a second line of defense. But we know that vaccination didn't prevent all of the infections, and the key here were antivirals and monoclonal antibodies and other forms of medical care that decreased the progression of mild infections to severe infections, hospitalization, and death. Because ultimately, that's what countries want. That's what ministries of health are concerned about. We do not want COVID-19 to be killing people. So that lesson is that COVID prevention is about more than vaccines. The next lesson has to do with a very important concept. Most of the vaccines were coming from North America, from Europe, from China, or from India. And increasingly, we understand that vaccine security will require that we develop regional manufacturing capability, and in that is another lesson, which is that in order to develop manufacturing capability around the world, we have to train the global biomedical workforce. And the Korean government and the World Health Organization have been very involved in a partnership to train the biomedical manufacturing workforce. So vaccine security is global security. The final lesson has to do with preparedness, and we know that we have to prepare for the next pandemic. Preparedness is a dynamic concept, and we have to be able to take whatever new pandemic comes at us, look at data, analyze them, identify where our pandemic response is not sufficient, and make appropriate policy changes. This means leadership. We really do need leadership, global leadership, in a global pandemic. We need someone to deal with the multiple requests for funding, to deal with the different sources of funding, to be able to talk to countries and understand what the needs are. But was there an organization, a council, a person, or a treaty that could do this? Was there a plan? For this kind of effort, the world needs leadership. So let's think about the next pandemic and bridging the gaps. The first gap was the diagnostics gap. Not having adequate diagnostics meant we didn't, we don't know who had the disease in many countries. We don't know who died of the disease in many countries. And if you didn't know that, you assume that COVID didn't affect your population. The manufacturing gap, which we've talked about already, the need to make 8 billion or 16 billion doses as quickly as possible. The equity gap, one that we're still dealing with today, that the high-income countries got vaccines first and that low-income countries remain 77.5% unvaccinated. And these had consequences. All of them relate to the fact that if you didn't have diagnoses, you didn't have deaths, which meant that no one's concerned about COVID, which means that when the vaccines are available, no one wants to take them. And if no one takes the vaccines, there's no impact. The manufacturing gap meant that if there were no vaccines available, there was no vaccination and no impact. The equity gap meant that because countries were low-income, they didn't get vaccines until much later, which meant no vaccinations at first and no impact. And all of this led to more deaths, greater economic costs globally, and more variants being generated. Why? Because outbreaks generate variants, and variants generate outbreaks. And all of this could be solved if we had effective leadership. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your insights with us, Dr. Kim. We really do appreciate your time. Well, the COVID-19 pandemic isn't exactly over yet, and as Dr. Kim just mentioned, developing vaccines at a rapid pace and the need to distribute them equitably around the world are some of the important points that we learned. When it comes to innovation and development, the role of the pharmaceutical industry is indispensable. So as our second speaker of the day, we invited Mr. Paul Burton from Moderna, the very company that was at the forefront of developing vaccines during the COVID-19 pandemic. Well, thank you for connecting with us, Mr. Burton.
Hello, my name is Paul Burton, and I am Chief Medical Officer at Moderna. And today, it is my privilege to be able to talk to you about the power of messenger RNA.
Well, we are very much looking forward to your lecture today, so please take it away.
You can see in this slide the speed with which we were able to go from the formation of the company in 2010 to supplying over 800 million doses of our SpikeVax vaccine by the end of 2021. We now have 46 different clinical development programs going across many different therapeutic areas, and these will be important to provide therapeutics for many, many different diseases in years to come. Here you can see the timeline, that accelerated timeline by which we were able to develop our COVID-19 vaccine. It took just two days to generate the sequence for the messenger RNA for the spike protein. It took longer, weeks and months, to do the clinical trials that led to the approval of SpikeVax, our COVID-19 vaccine. And it was just two days to generate that sequence. And that really underpins the power of messenger RNA, the speed with which we can make a vaccine, and then we can test it, and we're getting even faster at testing vaccines now using messenger RNA. Here you can see that over that 10-year period, we invested heavily in research, technical development, and manufacturing for our pipeline. That allowed us, by the time 2019 came and we were preparing for COVID-19, and then in 2020 and 2021 to actually test and make the vaccine, that allowed us to then be ready to manufacture it at great quality in large amounts. Here you can see the central dogma of molecular biology, that DNA is converted into messenger RNA and then into protein. mRNA is a natural substance. It's in all of our cells, and when we are injected with mRNA, the cells take it up, goes to the ribosome, is translated into a protein, which goes then to the exact site in the cell where it is needed, whether that's intracellular, transmembrane, or a secreted protein. And it is that fidelity with which protein can be made that is so powerful and I really think underpins the utility of mRNA. As I said, we now have 46 different clinical development programs across infectious diseases, oncology, rare diseases, cardiovascular, and autoimmune disease. This will make the opportunity to treat so many diseases in coming months and years. And here, in the next slide, you can see some of those targets. Many latent as well as respiratory viruses, cancer vaccines, intratumoral oncology targets, and other therapeutics, even inhaled therapeutics, perhaps a cystic fibrosis one day. Infectious diseases clearly represent a very important unmedical need. And here you can see that we're investing huge effort not only in respiratory viruses and latent viruses like CMV and EBV, but in other global health threats. COVID-19 is a virus that will not go away. It continues to mutate. We have to be able to be prepared to develop new vaccines, to design them and develop them quickly and bring them to people as rapidly as possible. And again, that is the power of messenger RNA that allows that to happen. So in summary, Moderna's mRNA platform technology was developed a decade ago, but it has now been tested extensively in R&amp;D. We have brought the COVID vaccine, of course, to the world, and that has treated many, many people around the world, hundreds of millions of people. The platform is also able to pivot in very quick time as viruses change and evolve. We can go after new variants, and we can obviously go after many other diseases as well. We have a very large pipeline of targets, 46 development programs right now, spanning many other different therapeutic areas. And finally, I think the future for us around pandemic preparedness is to collaborate, work with international organizations, transparently share data, ensure that we can track viruses and pathogens as they arise, and we can quickly work to make vaccines against them. So thank you very much for your attention.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Burton, for your time today. I hope many will remember what you said today, especially about collaboration and making collective efforts on a global scale. So thank you very much once again. Well, the global biopharmaceutical industry is expected to grow by nearly 8% annually in the post-COVID era. As such, efforts to build infrastructure to produce vaccines and train medical and healthcare professionals accordingly continue to be made all over the world. With that said, I'm told that there is a reason why South Korea in particular is garnering attention. Let's have a look.
The World Health Organization has launched a biotech workforce training project in addition to creating an mRNA technology transfer hub to address inequity in vaccine access. South Korea was designated as a global training hub for biomedical manufacturing in February 2022 and is now providing vaccine and biopharmaceutical production training and other training to vaccine producers in low and middle-income nations. The WHO has cited the willingness of the South Korean government to provide support to nation's strong infrastructure and excellent manufacturing capabilities of vaccine and biopharmaceutical firms in South Korea as reasons for selecting the country to be a global training hub for biomedical manufacturing.
한국 정부는 중저소득 국가의 감염병 대응 역량을 지원하기 위한 국제공조에 적극 동참하고 있습니다. 특히 올해 2월 글로벌 바이오인력 양성 허브 국가로 지정된 이후 아시아, 아프리카 등 중저소득국을 대상으로 실시하고 있는 백신 바이오 생산 인력 교육은 171명의 제1기 교육생을 배출하였고 제2기 교육도 진행하여 올해에만 총 510명이 배출될 예정입니다. 교육생들의 배움에 대한 열정과 교육 과정에 대한 만족도가 매우 높고 고국의 방역 현장에서의 역할을 기대하는 그 모습이 정말 좋습니다. 앞으로도 한국 정부는 이러한 기대에 부응하고 보건 위기의 국제적 협력을 강화하기 위해 글로벌 바이오캠퍼스 건립 등 교육 시설을 더 확충하고 풍부한 전문 인력을 확보하여 더 많은 교육생들이 교육을 받을 수 있도록 함으로써 대한민국이 글로벌 바이오인력 양성 허브로서의 위상을 확고히 해나가겠습니다.
It seems like we have taken a step closer to the new normal, but like we said, nobody can guarantee that there will not be another pandemic. So to discuss more on the past, present, and the future, we invited an excellent group of panelists here in the studio today. So first, Dr. Jung Gisak, Chair of the National Infectious Disease Crisis Response Advisory Committee. Thank you for being here, Dr. Jung.
It's my pleasure to be here.
And Professor Kwon Sun-man from the School of Public Health at Seoul National University. A pleasure to meet you, Professor.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
And Dr. Kim Anhee, Executive Director at the Research Investment for Global Health Technology Fund. Welcome to the session, Dr. Kim.
Thank you. It's a delight to meet you. Thank you for inviting.
All right, so let's dive right into our discussion today. If I may, let me begin with your Dr. Jung. You've spent a considerable amount of time as a physician and also as a public health official. So in your view, how was COVID-19 different from other infectious diseases that we had dealt with in the past that led us to the current situation that we are in?
Well, we can remember the MERS and SARS several years ago. What COVID-19 is different from MERS and SARS is we can find at several points. MERS and SARS shows usually high fever and severe cough and severities in very short time. But about 20% of COVID-19 patients has no symptom, so they are not detected. So that's why the silent infection and silent spread has spread it all over the world, and every country is suffering from COVID-19 until so far after three years passed.
And because of those distinctive characteristics, the exit strategy must also be different, right?
Well, the SARS and MERS, we have overcome. MERS is just endemic. But regarding COVID-19, it's not a pandemic anymore sooner or later, but it will remain as an endemic disease and will be suffering from epidemic here and there and from all over the world. So we know that we cannot eradicate the virus on earth, so we have a vaccine for COVID-19. But the thing is, COVID-19 is still a very virulent disease. So we must be afraid of COVID-19 until it is more stable. So until then, we need a more efficient vaccine, and we need a more effective antiviral agent with less expensive ones. And we need more sophisticated treatment for a very severe COVID-19 patient. Then nobody will be much afraid of COVID-19 anymore.
Well, if you think about it, COVID-19 has had various impacts on our everyday lives, and it really gave us an opportunity to rethink about the importance of public health. So what were some of the lessons that we learned through COVID-19 in terms of our public health system?
You're right, public health policy and the system play a key role, you know, preparedness and response to a pandemic, COVID-19. For example, in the early stage of the response to this COVID-19, Korea effectively adopted a so-called 3T policy, testing, contact tracing, and treatment systems. I think especially in the early, very early stage of this pandemic, it was quite effective to have a massive-scale testing and, you know, tracing all those contact points and select, I mean, select those severe patients to the hospital. And in that whole process, I think epidemiological investigation or the workers in public health centers, they played a key role. But public health means it goes beyond these systems because it heavily relies on the voluntary participation and compliance of the public. For example, in the personal hygiene, washing hands regularly, thoroughly. And as you know, the wearing of face masks has been one of the most cost-effective measures to respond to this COVID-19. And the physical distancing, and it all rely on the voluntary participation. So in that whole process, it means that the public trust and communication also matter a lot.
And so it's really all efforts coming from all parts of society. We really need to stick together and think about how public health can be elevated, the level of public health can be elevated, right?
Yeah, I mean, the nature of pandemic these days means that basically no one is safe until everybody else is safe because we cannot block the mobility of people. We are living in the, you know, in this century of huge global mobility across the borders. So in that sense, ensuring the equity, I mean, or equitable access to vaccines, equitable access to necessary medicines, equipment, they are the key concerns.
Dr. Kim, I believe what Professor Kwon just mentioned, achieving global equity, is in line with what your organization does, right? So could you tell us a little bit more about your organization and some of your work as well?
Yes, I think in fact Professor Kwon has set the stage quite nicely for me to describe why we exist. So we were established in 2018 as a Korean nonprofit organization. We're a granting agency. We don't make things, but we give out grants to support efforts to develop these essential health technologies but as global public good. So in terms of what we've achieved so far, we are very happy that so far within our portfolio, we've spent close to $40 million to support about 42 projects on developing vaccines, therapeutics, and diagnostics.
So what are your thoughts or suggestions perhaps on how the global community should approach the issue of global equity?
So this, I mean, that's, as we all know, that's a loaded question, so I approached this very humbly. I do think that there's a real opportunity for the global community to gather around an effort to ensure that we are able to develop essential health technologies as public good and global public good. Different types of knowledge and stakeholders must be engaged in order to do that. So for example, what that means is even to envision how one should design such a diagnostic kit, the specific characteristics of the diagnostic kit. I mean, Professor Jung mentioned earlier that one of the tasks that we should think about doing is to make effective vaccines cheaper. That's a great example.
And international solidarity is of course key to this very issue that we are talking about, right?
Absolutely.
Well, I think now we should turn to Professor Lewin to talk a bit more about international cooperation. Professor Lewin is joining us virtually from Australia. A pleasure to meet you, Professor.
Hi, my name is Professor Sharon Lewin. I'm Director of the Dowd Institute, a joint venture of the University of Melbourne and Royal Melbourne Hospital in Melbourne, Australia.
Well, thank you for joining us once again. Would you say cross-border communication played a critical role in tackling the pandemic?
Yeah, international communication and collaboration has been absolutely key to our response. First of all, in notification of the existence of COVID and the local epidemiology. Second, for collaboration around scientific developments, major advances such as understanding the natural history, the immune response, development of vaccines, et cetera. And third, in sharing information around genomic sequencing on new variants. I think though we have still room to move and improve in respect to international sharing of data. The most important, I think, for pandemic preparedness for the future is in surveillance, that every country needs to have the capacity to rapidly diagnose any new infectious disease and the confidence to share that information broadly with the rest of the community, with the rest of the global community. We still don't quite have those processes and trust in place, I think. There are lots of barriers to countries sharing those data. It's complex, but it's definitely something that we need to improve.
Well, nevertheless, I think developing the necessary vaccines played the most significant role in containing the pandemic, wouldn't you say?
We had vaccines available within 12 months. In future pandemics, the goal should be higher. Many vaccine entities are now aiming to have vaccines available within 100 days of a new pandemic. And that will need significant advances in the science, significant capabilities in vaccine manufacturing, and rapid capabilities for large-scale clinical trials. And to get that all done in 100 days is a big challenge. I think what we've learned from COVID is how important early access to a vaccine was. It was vaccines that had turned around this pandemic. And if we can make them quicker and available faster, that would be very, make a very, very big difference for future pandemics. Also, one of the most important things is to solve this issue of equity of access to vaccines. We still had inequitable access and I think that could be addressed by manufacturing in multiple sites for future vaccines and agreements around sharing vaccines that are in place in peace times so that they can guide us in the event of a pandemic.
All right, thank you very much, Professor, for sharing your thoughts with us today.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you. It's absolutely essential that the world has these conversations now about how to be better prepared for future pandemics. We need to learn from our mistakes and what we did well in our response to COVID to ensure we're in a better place next time.
Thank you very much. And now let's turn to Mr. Benoah Opsmer from Merck. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Opsmer.
So I am part of Merck Life Science. My name is Benoah Opsmer.
Well, Mr. Opsmer, I'm curious to know how your department, your firm, has provided support to vaccine development and much more. So could you tell us some of the challenges and achievements that you witnessed over the last three years?
The Life Science business which I work for at Merck provides leading products and solutions and services to our biopharmaceutical academia and clinical diagnostic in the fight against COVID-19. As we all know, the unpredictable COVID-19 crisis caused a surge in demand in all industry worldwide and delays in the global supply chain. And at the beginning of COVID, we established a framework that governed our decision and our priorities were in threefold. One was really to ensure the employee's safety. Second was really to support the response effort for public health. And number three was to ensure the business continuity. And here we leverage our global supply chain network to continue delivering solution and services. And in partnership with our Life Science customer and local government, Merck is supporting more than 35 testing, more than 80 different vaccine programs, and more than 50 monoclonal antibodies and antiviral treatment for COVID. Here, I think we analyzed, learned, and pivoted our ways of working during the pandemic. This means working in lockstep with local authorities and our customer. And for Merck, it translated to manufacturing agility, supply chain flexibility, and transportation creativity. And we adopted different transportation routes, moving from passenger to cargo, from aircraft to truck. And we scaled up our manufacturing capacity for critical products and trained additional manpower in all our sites worldwide. We moved from globalization to regionalization. And we saw a knowledge gap in scaling operation for mass production. We came in quickly to transfer our knowledge in scaling operation to our customer.
And I'm assuming what you just said, training manpower and successfully achieving regionalization, must have been accompanied by investment. And I believe Merck has been very much interested in working in partnership with major universities and agencies in Korea.
Since 2016, we have been running an open, customizable bioprocessing training program at our AMLab Collaboration Center in Songdo. Merck is also actively involved in fostering bioprocessing expertise in Korea through various training, most recently with the Institute of Quantum Biophysics of Sun Kyu Won University, SKKU, the College of Pharmacy in Jeongbuk National University, and the K-Nibert Training Center led by the Ministry of Health and Welfare. Collaboration is key for open innovation in the bioprocessing industry.
Well, I'm very glad to hear that we are working very closely together in this field.
So as a closing comment, thanks for all the participants in this discussion.
Thank you for your time today, Mr. Opsmer. So we keep hearing about the importance of global cooperation as well as regional collaboration. And I think another type of cooperation which is worth mentioning at this point is private-public partnership. And coming back to you, Dr. Kim, your organization is one of the participating members of such partnership, the WHO Global Training Hub for Bio Manufacturing. And I'm told that that has to do with training manpower as well. So do you have any similar projects that you have in mind for the future?
Yes, very much so. We are actually very excited about our newest award type, which is Training Grants. It hasn't been implemented just yet, but we got the enthusiastic endorsement from our board and we plan to introduce it in our official call for proposal next year sometime. Maybe I could just start describing a little bit about our strategy and objectives, one of which directly ties to why we decided to participate in supporting the ministry's efforts in personnel training. So our strategy has always been, and it will remain this way, is to contribute to improving global health equity that's attributable to infectious diseases. So that is our mission. It is one about health equity. Now, in order to achieve that mission, we will focus on four strategic objectives. The first is what I've described earlier. It is to support developing critical health technologies, which includes so far vaccines, therapeutics, and diagnostics at the moment. And what that means is at a minimum, we ensure, we are committed to ensuring global access as well as large-scale public procurement and delivery of these through public health system in low and middle income countries. That's been the case. The second is collaboration, which I've heard all the panelists emphasize. We would like to serve as a platform to catalyze international collaboration, to offer Korea's strengths, but also learn from others where Korean partners can learn from. The third goal is evidence generation. Again, we believe in developing products, not just for the sake of developing products, but to serve public health needs. And that has to be absolutely guided by evidence to teach us about what should a particular product look like to be actually of public health use. So that's our third objective and we are giving out grants to researchers in low and middle income countries as well as Koreans to generate such evidence. The very last one, but not least, is the training grants, which we'll introduce next year. And the intent there is very much aligned with the Korean government's ambition. So as a very small token of contribution, we will start giving out these training grants. We'll work very closely with the Health Ministry, which leads the initiative, to make sure that we synergize and not duplicate our efforts. Our intent is to support the government's effort.
So identifying where we are good at and really putting all these resources together to achieve a common goal is basically, that would be a good starting point, right? Well, let's now speak to Dr. Fumi Griege, Deputy Director General at IFPMA for more. Nice to meet you, Dr. Griege.
Hello, I'm Fumi Griege, Deputy Director General of IFPMA. I'm very glad to be here. Thank you for inviting me.
Well, thanks for joining us. Dr. Griege, from the pharmaceutical industry's point of view, what would you say was the most dramatic moment in our efforts to contain the virus?
For me, there were three dramatic moments that demonstrated the unprecedented power of science, innovation, collaboration, but also challenges in equitable access. First, in March of 2020, just days after the global pandemic was declared, our industry committed to play the biggest role possible in finding solutions against COVID-19. True to our word and thanks to unique innovations and collaborations, in December of 2020, we saw the first of several safe and effective vaccines approved for COVID-19. Then, in March of 2021, we saw the first vaccines arriving in Accra, Kigali, and Tokyo at the same time. There was real hope that global solidarity and equitable access through COVAX mechanism would prevail. Unfortunately, a month later, vaccine deliveries from India to lower-income countries abruptly came to a stop due to the export bans. But the final highlight for me is July of this year. That's when our industry tabled a potential game-changing proposal for how we can collectively build an equity into future global pandemic response. The proposal consists of a commitment to set aside in real time a percentage of vaccines and treatments for frontline healthcare workers and vulnerable populations wherever they live.
Then what do you think are the efforts that need to come from the pharmaceutical industry in order to prepare the world for another similar outbreak?
The pharma industry has developed COVID-19 vaccines and treatments at record speed and in historical quantities, but we know equitable access is where collectively we must all do better. For this reason, the pharma industry launched the Berlin Declaration. That said, we can only do this if there is political commitment and the necessary financing, if there is health systems in lower-income countries that are stronger and therefore ready to absorb these products. And last but not least, this can only happen if companies can rely on strong innovation ecosystem grounded in IP rights. With these enabled in place, we'll be on the cusp of creating a new social contract for equity, one that truly leaves no one behind. Thank you.
All right, thank you for talking to us today, Dr. Griege. Well, leaving no one behind seems to be the key message here that keeps coming up in our discussion. Now, having said this, Professor Kwon, in your view, should there be another pandemic? How can we better respond to that situation?
Well, I think pandemic is not just a health crisis or health issue, but it's more like a social crisis because it's a huge impact on the whole socioeconomic system of the world. So I think we need really a good governance system based on a good communication and collaboration, which means a communication and collaboration across different sectors, like not just the health, but health, education, social, and economic development. And also, within a country, there should be a good collaboration across different levels of government, between central and local government. And from a global perspective, we need a good collaboration between across different countries. And we talked a lot about these global public good aspects of the development and access to essential vaccines, medicines, and technology. But at the same time, there's some global public good aspect of a good policy and policy learning across countries. So what kind of policies work, what policies do not work, and why? So and also another area of global collaboration is kind of a monitoring surveillance systems, collaboration within a, can be a regional level public good aspect, but regional, global collaboration also in the areas of monitoring and good surveillance of pandemics.
All right, well, I have, I'm afraid I only have one question left, and that is for you, Dr. Jung. And the wider belief is that vaccines absolutely contributed to really tackling COVID-19, but there are still some mixed opinions when it comes to the effectiveness and people's belief in that. So my question is, what are your thoughts on this? And what do you think should be the future direction for vaccine developments?
Well, vaccine is one of two main armaments we have, the vaccine and the drug. So it's definite. Think about again the influenza. We have an influenza vaccine and many high-risk patients are going through without having influenza or mild influenza in the flu season. But I think as a clinician, the vaccine development in less than a year after pandemic began is a miracle. Most scientists says it will take about a couple of years, even five years, but they developed in less than a year and it is effective and very safe. But the vaccine is different from a drug. The vaccine is for healthy people, so safety comes first. So I know that many people are worrying about the safety of our current vaccine, but in Korea, we have already have many, many, many vaccines spread all over the country, but there are some issues I like to be, I like the vaccine to be improved in vaccine area. One of these is the durability. So if you have a one-shot and can endure for a lifetime, that's the best one. So the durability should be improved, not lasting such a three months or four months with lasting. And the other one is the effectiveness. And we need a more effective vaccine in preventing infection itself. And we need the more effective vaccine to lowering the severity and lowering the mortality. So and the other one I like to mention is the convenience of the vaccine. You once said about equity of the vaccine all over the world, but this kind of mRNA vaccine should be kept in a minus 70 degrees. So if you can develop a very convenient vaccine, which can be kept in room temperature and a very inexpensive vaccine. and a very inexpensive vaccine, that will be an ultimate goal for us. So with those improvements in mind, we're free, we can feel very free.
Well, I think if there is one lesson that I learned through today's session, it is that whether it be about vaccine developments or global equity, global access, the key message is that we as the members of the international community, we all have to come together and be really united in tackling any possible pandemic that we are, we might see in the future. Alright, well, that brings us to the end of our panel discussion. And I really would like to take this moment to thank the whole group, whether it be, you know, joining us in the studio or virtually. Thank you so much for being here today. And I hope that today's session was valuable for all of you as well, as much as it will be for the viewers watching this session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the past three years, the wider global community all came together and we all fought together against the COVID-19 pandemic, after which we learned valuable lessons that we need to strengthen solidarity and be better prepared for another pandemic situation. I hope today's special session of the World Biosummit 2022 has provided you with new insights and fresh ideas moving forward. That's all we have for today. Thanks for watching. Goodbye.